Are you ready, Dawn?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess we'll start with the minutes. Any corrections or additions?
I believe it would be important under the LPM lease agreement, it says county attorney Jennifer O'Hare presented a first amendment to the Lincoln Park Manor lease agreement, and then I moved to approve the amendment, and then the motion carried. I, just for reference sake, it might be a good idea to indicate the increased rent, even if not in the dollar amount, just the purpose of the amendment. If someone hadn't been following along and they read that, they wouldn't know what it was for. I would say...
I would concur, but I'm not sure it was even ever mentioned, so I can fit parentheses and fit it below.
Sure.
That'd be fine.
Four hundred dollars back rent for the remainder of the contract?
Four hundred dollars, yeah, or increased rent, however you want to say that. And do we want, this is just a technicality, but do we want to say under nursing home, an increased room rental rate? Or an increase, is there a more eloquent way that you would say a resident is paying to stay at the nursing home in print instead of room rental?
I guess you could say monthly rates or something, maybe.
Resident rates, resident?
Resident rates, monthly rates. Probably would sound better. Residents' rates. We'll increase resident rates for 2018.
So residents instead of room rental?
Yeah.
Where is that at? Oh, never mind.
The box.
It would be increase, strike room, strike rental, replace with residents, S, and then apostrophe after the S. Did we also give approval to human resources for the revised job descriptions? Because it says that they were provided, and it doesn't say that we...
I think she was gonna, she was gonna...
She was gonna approve it.
Yeah, she was gonna do something else.
Okay.
I guess she's coming back today for you guys to tell her if you had any modifications.
Okay, anything else? Have a motion to approve the corrections.
I would move to approve the minutes of correction.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You didn't move it, second, no questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'll just ask him to get his presence from where he came from.
We have a bill from Slayton County Environmental Services for our LEPG cooperative agreement for thirteen thousand five hundred. Is that paid, Dawn, this year or next year?
I apologize, what did you say?
Uh, the grant for LEPG with Slayton County, provide our sanitary services.
That would be paid in January.
Okay. We have a bill from League of Kansas municipalities for dues for next year. Do we need a motion to continue, Dawn, or do we just...
Um, that is the one that you guys chose not to do last year because they'd increased the fees so dramatically, but they have now gone back to what they were giving previously.
And those aren't due till January either, are they? Oh, this...
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So we have time to read that?
The bills that we received for Lincoln Park Manor, some repair bills, that reminds me of the elevator. Did we figure anything out with that? Are we combining elevator inspections between the courthouse and the...
No, we have not figured that yet, so...
Is that something that we have to do at the beginning of the year? Is that, how, when's our annual inspection for that? Anybody know?
I don't know. I'm assuming they've already done their annual inspection.
Yeah, I think they just did it not too long ago, if I remember right.
On the courthouse or the nursing home facility?
I'm assuming you have the nursing home.
Nursing home, yeah.
We get inspected on a, like, every other month basis.
We have a maintenance agreement, don't we?
So was Greg looking into that, or who?
No, he tasked me with that. I guess.
He was gonna find out about the telephone deal from that other outfit, wasn't he?
Potentially. And I've talked to the guy that did our elevator, and he gave us the car for it, guy that can give us a bid, so...
What's the name of that elevator company? Do you know?
I pronounce it Byson Corp., but it's not.
How do you spell it?
I don't know.
Okay. I just, that was one of the things we left undecided. I wanted to know if we were gonna follow up on that, and the floor scrubber too, what we want to do about that situation.
About what?
The floor scrubber, or what we had decided.
I think that, uh, I talked to John Paul, and he was gonna get back with a person he talked to about. They'd had to bid in the beginning, make sure those numbers are still correct.
Do you believe in that accounts payable or not that I gave you?
The what?
That accounts payable or not I gave you, if you go to the Ts, you can probably find it.
Oh.
T H Y something.
Okay. Do we, okay.
But when you call them, they pronounce it something completely different.
Okay.
I think it's like a Dutch company or something. I'm on the show, we pay them off. Otherwise, all work on getting it into the council table.
Yeah, I don't see them on here. Get... Getting their name in the accounts payable?
Yeah. It's got paid off.
Oh, getting it, retrieving it now, I see what you're saying. It must not be monthly, though.
They used to pay them monthly, but they made it one to a quarterly basis.
So you chose not to be in the League of Municipalities last year?
Yeah, they had a large rate increase last year, so we declined it. And she said they went back to their original rate this year, so it's something to discuss.
Have you ever used them as a resource in the past, that they're valuable, or...
Well, sometimes when the cities call here and ask questions, and we can't really help them, if we're a member of county, and it gives them a resource that they can call, even when they're supposed to be members. But I have called them, talked to their legal counsel before, about these city county issues.
But the city, is Lincoln a member? The city of Lincoln?
I believe that Lincoln is. I'm not sure the smaller communities. Are you ready, please, phone?
Sure.
T H Y S S E N A R U B D.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ladonna.
Since we were given a car, I'd like to get a carport for it. Since it's a little nicer than what we've had before. And we have no garage or carport or anything in our apartment to place it. And the cost is that middle number twelve hundred or something. And the ten percent is what we have to pay upfront. And then, when they come and install it, we have to have a check available for them. So I want to turn it in with the end of the month bills. And that's from S and S Auto Body. They just order them in, and then the company brings it and sets it. And we're putting it on the cement, and they will...
Anchor it.
Anchor it to the cement. That's cost all included, so... And we have many capital outlays. And then I just wanted to update you about the green core. They've got the new computer parts in, but they're having trouble programming yet, which I was afraid of. So they still have it at Kievers.
The one that you want to sell? The one you want to sell?
I would have had hoped to get the bill before the end of the year, but I don't think that's gonna happen.
Do you know what the blue book value of that, have you...
Twenty-three hundred dollars. The cost to repair the computer is around fifteen million.
Fifteen hundred million?
It's worthless without the computer repairs, so... Yeah.
Well, that almost makes up for the carport.
Yeah.
Probably a good idea to buy one.
And that is a carport that has sides, and it's a little bit wider, so you can open the doors underneath the carports. So when you want load stuff, you're not gonna be digging the doors on the sides. But that, that, David said it's a contract. And I don't mind signing it, but I didn't know if you wanted to sign or if you wanted me to sign it. That's the reason I brought it in.
What you wish.
Oh, that could be better under a roof.
Well, and just as a, you know, we brought the green car new, and it's been on the elements over ten years. And there's paint peeling in all kinds of places. And, you know, just the peeling paint that's out. The weather has, and hailstorms and everything else, it's terrible.
You got it, depending, Lexis.
But is that the only bid? I mean, that's probably the only local person, I'm assuming, that really retails this.
I don't know, I don't know around here, it doesn't. He's the only one on the water.
Yeah. It's hard to get most of those bids that are local, and there's only one person, does it?
I just wouldn't be aware if there was, so just, if that's fair, that we don't bid it out, and...
Coming out of capital outlay, do you need a motion? We can just authorize, I'd move to authorize with Dawn as an incoming draft for carport.
Do I have a second? I have a second, any questions?
My question would be, in your capital outlay fund, you were going to plan on purchasing the new car, so we're gonna sell the old one, because you did receive that one at no cost. What are the plans now for the capital outlay fund?
I don't have any plans, it's just been that twenty thousand dollars.
There's twenty in there?
There's forty some, yeah. It just stays there. The old side of the building, that heater is probably original, so I would imagine at some point in time, that heater will have to be replaced.
A furnace? Is it a gas furnace?
Furnace, air conditioner, yeah. At some point, that will have to be replaced. And not, we need that money in that fund. We just got a new roof because of the hail, so, you know, that would have been a separation, so we won't need to spend that. So it just kind of sits there and stays there for funds.
So since we're in the last month of the year, of our fiscal year, do you know what the dollar amount is? Are you going to have any left over? And do you plan on rolling that into the capital outlay? Is that how you...
No, it generally stays in our account, right? It depends. If we have a lot, we're like, we refer, we were like one point five percent under budget, so...
Last year?
This year, so far.
Or currently, currently?
And I'm not sure how much over in income projections I am. I don't remember. It is, you know, we're like at ninety-nine percent of the year, even though the year's not over, so I don't know if there's more. There is more coming in. I know inpatient fees, but I don't know if there's any more tax money.
Your reimbursement, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're in good shape.
Is that what your line item is called, reimbursements? When you charge fees and you get paid? No?
No.
It's just called income?
Patient fees. There's different kinds. I have like ten different kinds of different kinds of different grants, different patient fees. Just depends on which category comes in. We do have some reimbursement with salary, and I think that's probably about all. Unless there's just something that we purchased that we got reimbursed for.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion is carried. I guess you're to sign it, Ladonna?
Yeah.
Is that all that you had today?
I wanted to go into executive session for non-elected personnel for leave time.
And how much time do you need?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes? Do you want human resources here?
Uh, no. Okay. Maybe this is a good time to cover one of the subjects I was going to cover. Actually, I won't cover it back. I'll cover it later, but let me give you a form to fill out. So we cover all of our bases regarding executive session. Somebody can fill it out.
How long did you say?
How, um, do we, um, do we have to check more than one of these boxes, or...
Uh, just one.
All right.
I think that the first one is... Is to discuss personnel matters, but you need to come up with a statement.
I need to come up with a what?
Statement.
Is this because...
For...
The leave...
A statement for, of what? The purpose, or what?
This, yeah, you need to make a statement, like, she said it was regarding personnel on leave time.
So that's what I, that would be my statement?
Does it have something to do with FLM or...
That's...
General Leave...
No.
Okay.
Is it approving requests at leave time, or...
I think we will discuss in executive session. Uh, I would move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters with non-elected personnel in regards to leave time for ten minutes. With Ladonna, do you need anybody else, Ladonna? Do you need him?
Dawn can stay.
Dawn wants, okay. Dawn?
She might ask Mr. Dork.
Dawn and the three commissioners. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
My question is about the statement of purpose. Does that give you parameters for that, or I'm not sure?
I'm sure it does. I'm sure it gives you parameters.
May I read it?
You say.
Thank you.
Done with state and with other, broadly.
So we, so we can't get, we can't vote on this until we decide on the statement? We can't vote to accept the executive session without a statement saying why we're going into the executive session, and this statement is blank? The justification, you have thirteen justifications.
Excuse me. My motion did state why we were going into executive session. I have not gotten it written down, but I will write it down.
I'm not comfortable voting without deciding on what the statement is. That's why I was just asking for...
Would you repeat the motion, Dawn?
I have right now, I was going to discuss personnel, or sorry, it's recessed me to executive session for ten minutes, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel in regards to leave time.
Is this changing a policy about leave time? Or are we approving leave time? Or, I guess leave time doesn't mean anything to me.
Leave time is an employee's benefits.
For an individual, or just for the department, or...
Either.
Okay.
In regards to leave time for an employee?
Thank you for printing that sheet out, Dawn.
It doesn't have all of them on there, but we'll discuss that one down.
Okay.
So is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there a call to question?
When I get the paper back, I will. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion is carried. We'll go in for ten minutes. We will start at ten, according to that clock, ten twenty-seven.
I probably did.
Deborah? Here?
Uh, well, she was out there.
I believe we should state for the minute that no action was taken.
Should we go back upstairs?
Deborah, you're up.
Sorry, you were in executive session, so...
So, you're here about...
Did you look at your...
This? Yes, I did.
I gave you your performance reviews, and...
I gave you your performance reviews and?
I did, I did, I did. And I thank you for shorting it down.
Is it better, or are you?
I, I'm a little more comfortable with it. I, um, think that the real test will become when we do it.
Okay. Were there any suggestions for additional changes?
I didn't. I would agree with Mr. Wallace. I think we got it once, and then we'll know whether it's sufficient.
Okay.
Better than it was.
Yeah, I think it's a really great place to start.
Okay, sounds good.
I, you can probably even do more consolidating next year.
Okay.
But I, I'm glad that we're gonna look at these every year.
I didn't want to take too much out.
Oh, yeah.
I figured, um.
No, it's very thorough, but I, I feel that, right, once you get into the practice of administering them, then we can look and see what can be consolidated, and I think it's a good place to start.
Very good. Um, the job description, was there any other changes? I did make the last of the changes that you had on the custodian and the recycling center for you, um, but other than that, was there anything else on any of the other ones? So we've done all the ones that would be the employees that, as a board, you would evaluate.
I have a question. Do we have, and I'm sorry, I don't have my handbook with me, but in the handbook, do you know, is there an employee disciplinary practice?
There's, there is verbiage, there is wordage, there's, there's in there. Um, I can bring that down for you?
If you would.
I can do that? If you guys are good with this, do you want?
Yeah, did you check with legal counsel about?
I want to make sure you guys are all done with where, with any changes you want to make.
Did that say that for all department heads? Because I?
Which?
It's under a bullet point you have for Director of Public Works and for Road and Bridge Supervisor. I just glanced at the Health Department.
That's okay.
Head, and I didn't see it. I'm getting supervisor.
Okay, which bullet?
It was, um, third bullet down under Director of Public Works is what I have on the top.
Yes, okay, and you?
So I'm just wondering, is that, is that worded the same?
We tried to make sure that the wordage was the same on every one.
Oh, there is a little, no? Because just out of curiosity, okay, I'll just turn the first one that I came to after the Health Department was County Appraiser. So, under Director of Public Works, we have the words interviewing, hiring, evaluating, rewarding, disciplining, and terminating department personnel.
Yeah, and the Health Department, I see that that one is a little different.
It's different, and then for Appraiser, it's different as well. Hiring, orientation, training, supervising, evaluating, and termination. I feel like it might help us to just be more uniform in our wording.
That was the goal. We must have missed that.
Well, that's three of them that are different.
Well, uh, the Appraiser and the Health Department is the same.
Oh, okay.
I can go back through.
Is that the same, okay, so I have EMS Director. That looks the same as what you had.
Yes, um, orientating is missing on Road and Public Works.
And you also have, but you also have interviewing on theirs.
Do I have interviewing on theirs?
Well, on the Director.
Add that on, add that one too.
You have it on both. On the Road and Bridge, Director of Public Works and Road and Bridge are very similar.
They are very similar.
Interviewing, hiring, evaluating, rewarding, disciplining, and terminating department personnel. That's all worded pretty much the same way.
I can make sure that they're all consistent and worded exactly the same.
Well, no, I mean, I, that, that's a point of discussion, in my mind.
Well, the department heads should all be worded exactly the same.
Are they all interviewing their own employees?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
And are they all training their own employees? Because there is no training. I don't see that. Maybe it's on a separate line.
County Appraiser says orientating, training. Um, but yeah, um, I thought we went through and made sure that they were all worded exactly the same, but apparently we missed that. Rhonda hasn't had to interview and hire anybody in a while, but if she did, then she would. It would be.
I guess I don't see training or orientation under anything for the Highway Department.
I, that's what I said.
Yeah.
And I said I can make sure that they're all exactly the same. Not a problem. I thought we copied and, I copied and pasted that they would all be exactly worded the same. These are the same, those are the same. That one's the same. It's just the one, this one needs to be fixed. And this one. Okay? Okay, I can do that.
That's all I, that's it?
One and two.
Yeah.
That's not bad. Okay, we'll do that. Do you want to start looking at, um, are you ready to start looking at others?
Others meaning employees?
The other employees? Okay. I'll, how about I print off a few? Um, I'll pick like a department, print a whole bunch of them off, bring them, you can take them home, and we'll kind of do the same thing.
I'd rather if you just email, save the paper. I'll read them on the computer. Anyone else want to save the paper? Cause this is, I mean, I have.
Aljo wants them on paper. I'll email you the other two. Okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, and I'll make that change.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Nancy? You want to take a tour, do you?
I do. I'm here to represent your tourism for Lincoln County and your Chamber of Commerce. And as we work on our budget for 2018, I'm hoping to see if there will be support this year to help expand our tourism here in the county. We're working on QR codes, which if you're familiar with QR codes, will be, um, literally a code that a smartphone can utilize for when we do not have the buildings open to help explain some of our historical buildings and what was in those historical buildings in all of our locations in the county. And then for Chamber, of course, we have our speakers coming in and our other events that you guys have helped supported us on throughout the year. And then we also are looking at the, um, Abe Lincoln Days, which comes up here in a couple months. We'll be ready to go for that one, and looking at the Kansas Sampler Festival, um, which has gone down to just regionals in this coming year, and in the next years to follow. So, we're just looking for support for our tourism.
Where is that regional gonna be? Is it gonna be a specific location?
Yes, they pick a region. Um, they're starting at the west, southwest corner this year.
I see.
That's where they're starting.
So there won't be one in every region? It'll just?
Exactly. It'll be a different.
So how many regions are there?
There are seven regions.
So it'll be about every seven years?
About every seven years. They'll get more to this location instead of doing one large, one like Kansas Sampler it's always done.
So, will only those in that region be in the sampler?
So it'll be narrowing it down.
Narrowed.
Narrowing it down, able to utilize and show more of those regions. Instead of doing the individual tents, if you ever attended a Kansas Sampler with individual tents in all seven regions, it'll be able to go down to just utilize one area once a year. Instead of doing a large, but they're trying something different through Kansas Travel and Tourism, so we'll follow suit from there.
I believe we budget the same amount, and we don't have what we have been doing, so.
Perfect. Dawn, I'll give that big workup to you.
I have Historical Society, um, prior year, 4,500, and budget.
So Historical Society?
That's historical. That's totally different.
It's promotion and tourism.
Does it come, where does it come from?
It comes out of County General, doesn't it?
Promotion and advertising?
Yeah.
That's, promotion and advertising, 1,520 budgeted for last year, but the actual says 2,378.
We did a?
We budgeted 2,000 last year.
Oh, I'm sorry, prior year actual, prior year actual. And then, but the actual was 2,378? Because of the billboard?
Yeah. I think we agreed. They changed the billboards, and we agreed to pay for one of them, or half of it, or whatever it was.
So the budget is 2,000, I'm sorry.
Overall, for your budget?
Out of, right, out of the general fund.
We only give the Chamber 1,000 billboards.
Yeah.
To split between tourism and the, yes, to utilize for the county.
So we split the billboard fee with the Lincoln County Economic Development as, um, under our line item of advertising, because that, because that had nothing to do with Chamber.
No.
So where do we pay our advertising, um, just in general, out of, Dawn? What, is that the same fund? When we pay the paper, when we put notices in?
No, 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 no.
That comes out of the department? The Treasurers Department pays for it?
Whichever department is paying for it out of.
Who, who pays for our ads? Commission?
Commission.
Commission comes out of it.
Okay.
Anything else, Nancy?
Yep, just want to work on my own budget.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Nancy.
You're so welcome. Do you guys want to take one of my notes?
Sure. We can do it, if you can do it in five minutes.
I have Randan's contract.
Oh, okay.
Um, I need two signed originals. There's a notice for, to proceed, but then there's also the contract behind, so.
This is a contract for trash collection between Randan and Lincoln County. It will commence on January the 1st of 2018, and it will end on December 31st of 2022. It's a four-year contract. Now, the contractor will collect and remove refuse from all single-family dwellings and from multifamily dwellings containing four units or less within the Lincoln County cities of Barnard, Bearley, Lincoln Center, and Sylvan Grove to furnish all labor, materials, equipment, and supervision necessary for this work. To perform all work required for a payment of $9.55 per month per dwelling unit, except the payment may be adjusted from time to time to provide for the contract, in the, as provided in the contract documents. This payment amount of work performed per dwelling unit is negotiable each year of the contract and may be changed upon mutual agreement of parties and by action of the board. And the reason that there would be a, uh, change in the monthly payment, uh, deals with increases due to inflation of fuel and liability insurance. And the contract does have proof of his liability insurance through an agent.
Although I believe it's supposed to be five years.
Five years? Did I not add right?
Well.
18, well, it probably is.
All of 18 and all of 20 through December of 22.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that was right.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry, Dawn.
My question is?
Think that through.
Are we, why are we, as the counties, signing this for the cities only? Wouldn't this be up to each individual city to contract?
We have a separate contract with the cities to provide services to their communities.
I thought that's what the dump is for. Don't we have them pay a fee, don't you all pay a fee on your tax bill every year to be able to?
Pissed up.
No, not to have it pissed up?
City residents pay on their city utility bill.
Right, so why?
To dump the fee and for the collection. We contract with Randan for contracts to the cities.
I'm saying, wouldn't that be up to each individual city, though? If we're not?
We have the contract with the city to provide trash services to the city.
But we don't put any funding into this? Are we fronting the 5,000 upfront?
The 5,000 upfront.
Yeah, he wants a $5,000 down payment, a deposit, excuse me?
No.
A deposit of $5,000 is required. Oh, oh, of, of the contractor. So who's he depositing with? Us?
I'm assuming, but this contract was far before me, so I'm assuming he issued a bond at some point in time, a long time ago. I'd have to search the file and look. That's to ensure that they'll perform the services.
Okay, so we have on our tax bill, isn't it a $70 a year?
$72 fee for solid waste disposal fees.
Where anyone in the county can go and utilize the dump, not the city pit, but the dump itself, so they pay that. And then the bill that they get within the city on their city tax, or their city utilities, excuse me, is for this contract?
And our solid waste disposal fees. The cities collect our solid waste disposal fees.
For anything inside the city limits.
And what is that rate?
$72 a year.
So it doesn't go on their county tax bill? It goes to?
The city, the city residents do not pay it on their tax bill. They pay it on their city utility bill.
So, so the city residents are double taxed, but they can't, but the?
They're not double taxed because it's not on their tax bill.
Okay, I'm sorry. They're double feed, because?
They're not double feed.
If you're paying $72 in addition to this $9.55 a month because you live in the city, you can choose to have it picked up at your curb, or you can?
You can choose. It's not a choice.
So you, if I live in the city, I can't haul my garbage out to the dump?
You can haul your garbage, but you're still going to get billed, so you might as well set it out at the curb.
Oh, so wait a minute. That's not the right way to explain it, because what you're saying is if I'm paying my $72 fee, I can haul my own garbage from my house out to the dump, and that's already calculated in there. But if I also pay this monthly fee, then I can have it picked up at my curb, and I don't have to worry about going out to the dump. But we're gonna charge every citizen, which we, or every residence, inside the cities and in the rural districts, that $72?
You're confusing the issue.
Okay.
Rural residents are paid 70, or are assessed $72 on their tax rule, because that's the only billing that we have for them.
Okay.
A year. City residents are billed $72 plus the monthly disposal fee on their city bill, not on their tax bill.
But they're not given the choice if they want, they're, you're, we're making them pay the $72 so that they too have access to the county dump? But they're not given the choice if they want, they're, you're, we're making them pay the seventy-two dollars so that they too have access to the county dump?
Every person pays seventy-two dollars on their tax, either on their tax bill or on their city utility bill, but they are not being billed twice.
No, that isn't, that is twice, because what you're saying is they don't have the choice of paying the seventy-two dollars, they're going to pay that seventy-two dollars, right?
Correct.
And, and where's that?
There's two separate fees. That is a trash collection fee, and there's a solid waste disposal fee.
But, but this contract is asking me to tell all of my constituents that if you live in the city, you must pay this fee whether you choose to put trash out on your curb or whether you choose to drive it, drive it to the dump, which you are already paying that seventy-two dollars for.
There's a separate fee, collection versus disposal.
The disposal is the seventy, but the disposal is the seventy-two dollars, correct?
Seventy-two dollars disposal.
Right.
Collection is, the contractor picks it up at your home and takes it to the land.
And I, I'm just explaining here to the commission board, I don't believe it's our job to tell the city residents that they must contract for them.
The city does.
Right, so why would we even sign this? This has nothing to do with us, it's by each city.
Because we have the contracts with the city.
Yeah, that's not, that's not appropriate governmental structure. It's not our job to tell the cities that they're going to mandate a certain monthly fee when the resident has the choice to haul it on, on their seventy-two dollar bill every year themselves. Or to choose that, I want the convenience of curb service, so I'll pay you your ten dollars a month. Why would the county mandate the cities to tell their, their residents that they have to do that? That's a terrible idea.
We're not mandating, the cities do anything.
You're contracting, which is not, it's not our contract to be having. We should be in charge of the dump and the dump for the county, not what the cities do.
Motion to approve the contract, Randan.
I have a motion to approve the contract with Randan. Do I have a second? I have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Why would you feel that it's appropriate to mandate that every residence in the county pay seventy-two dollars for access to our county dump?
We're not mandating, we're establishing the fee. The city mandates it, not us. What we're doing is establishing the fee.
No, when you sign your name to that paper, you're very much using your power at this table as a commissioner to tell each individual citizen what they must do. Because you are setting a rate and a contract for five years with a varying rate, there's no guarantee of a rate in there, did you hear it read? It said every year that that rate is negotiable. So why even sign for five years when you don't even know that the, it's not a locked-in fee? You're basically just saying, oh yes, we'll keep giving you your business for five years regardless of what you choose to, to charge us. That's, that's going to be up to them.
No, it's up to us to approve any of this.
No, we're not, we're approving a five-year span. You're not going to sign anything again. You're, you may not even be in office when that expires. That's a terrible idea, I'm sorry. That, it's, that is a very explicit microcosm, we're talking about pennies on the dollar of our budget, but that is an explicit microcosm of the problems that we are, we are having here at this table and in this county. You, it is a double fee. Dawn, you keep saying they're two separate fees, yes, they are, because there are two choices with that. Seventy-two dollars will get you hauling your own garbage out to the dump, and you're going to pay that regardless of what you do, apparently, because the county is saying that that's the, the county contract. Then the city on top of that will charge you your additional ten dollars a month so that you can opt for curbside service, which in my opinion should be an option. And that's through the city whether you contract and they keep track of those funds. We should not be doing that, I'm sorry. That's a terrible, terrible governmental structure.
Yes.
I have a question on this matter. I live in the city. We're billed, just say your basic, I suggest you just ten dollars a month to pick up. If I just do that and do not pay the seventy-two, that tells me I cannot deliver out there?
No, you're paying it on your city bill.
Okay, where's the seventy-two coming out?
It's on your city.
That's for the resident guys out in the country, correct?
They don't have pickup.
No, every resident, every resident.
In other words, you're not going to bill me, being, I'm in the city and picking up mine to go out there, but I do have stuff, I have farm residents that I can do deliver to them. Do I have to pay that additional?
If you have farm residents, you do.
I do not have a farm residence. I live in town, but I have a farm. And there is stuff that comes off the farm that does go to the dump. I have not been rejected yet, but is this saying that I will be?
It's the same, there's no change in policy whatsoever. There's zero change in the policy.
Well, where's the seventy-two falling in? And that's for me out in the residence in the county.
That don't have your trash picked up.
I'm not going to be doubled up then.
No, on your city bill, you pay like fifteen something or sixteen something a month.
Right.
It includes the six dollars for the solid waste disposal fee, they just bill you monthly rather than annually, like we do on the tax roll. It includes the, the nine dollar and fifty-five cents for him to collect it. So he's picking it up four times a month on average, or fifty-two times a year for nine dollars and fifty-five cents a month. And then it includes a twenty-five cent county administrative fee for being the pass-through for the, the money.
Which is exactly my point. Why are we charging a fee and making a percentage trying to be a pass-through easement for money? That's not our?
Well, I don't assume when we put in the, the transfer station and all of this came about and we needed a solid waste, the cities were probably having troubles with people collecting trash.
Question, does Randan drop his pickups off at our county dump?
Yes, he does.
So then we should be contracting with him for his, for our services to him to provide, we are providing the actual physical manipulation of the garbage from here to Salina, we're paying for that.
That's where, that's where the seventy dollars a year comes in.
And now the ten dollars a month shouldn't be none of our business because we should be contracting with him for him to use our waste disposal. Not for us to tell the residents that each individual resident inside the city has to pay that. That's, if they do that, that's between them and they either personally contract?
You know what you're going to find out how, if, if the cities let it be a choice, I'm just going to be honest with you. You're going to find trash sitting at people's curbs. You see it now.
But then you let the cities mandate it, that's not our responsibility. They need to take care of themselves.
But then you're going to also see trash out in the middle of the country.
And they need to take care of themselves.
Are those landowners, okay, no offense, but we had, what, a thirty thousand dollar grant in Highland Township for an illegal dump site along the county road? That's what's going to happen. That's part of their, I'm assuming that is part of the reason why they went to this process when they installed the transfer station. But that was a conversation from long, long ago.
But what we're basically saying is, signing this contract, there is no, there's no lock-in rate, it can be, it can fluctuate. We're guaranteeing five years with no rate assessment, there's no inflation.
Why didn't we have this discussion in October when Randan was here?
The, the contract isn't approved. I'm saying, that's a, I don't understand why we would contract with him to, to assess fees through the city. That is, that is bureaucracy at its finest, folks. It's just an example, like I said, it's pennies on the dollar for six and a half million dollars in your budget, but it's an example of how that works. And then, so what do we do? Tell the state then that we have to contract with certain people for our garbage? This is how it snowballs in every aspect of government. It's unreal.
Do I get a, a payback back if I have a farmhouse and nobody stays there, I don't stay in this house, do I still have to pay the seventy-two dollars?
No, if there's nobody residing in it.
So what do you have to do to get that off of the?
You need to come and let us know, and then we'll look to see if we show somebody living in there, and then we'll question you as to whether or not somebody is living in there.
But it's my understanding that every parcel gets that fee?
No.
There has to be someone living there.
Occupied residence.
A, a, okay, a residential parcel, not an ag parcel, but a residential parcel. So that's going to come automatically, it's up to you to figure out that you would have to turn in that three of your residential parcels are uninhabited and collect your money back.
We know that some of them are, but we don't always know all of them. And there are a lot of landowners that come in and tell us, and then there's a lot of landowners that come in and tell us that nobody's residing there, and then they are residing there.
But if the city is functioning as its own governing body, why would we interfere with that? That, if the county wants to contract?
Cause I'm assuming they asked us to. I don't know.
Interesting.
There's a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion is carried. Michael, you're up.
The visitor with, all the landowners involved with the mile of load, road closure. Everybody is in favor of it except for Ms. Shirley Creer. She says that they use that as a shortcut so they do not have to use the highway to get to their property.
It is a minimum maintenance?
Yes.
And she would not be in favor of closing it?
That was?
They'd have trouble, what, a half mile on the island?
Yeah, approximately half mile. Visited with the other landowners and K-Doc turned informed them that that would be changing from the, if closed, it would be changing from an intersection to a field entrance. Prelimarily, they're fine with that, but they'd have to go through their engineer and Ellsworth, but she was not in favor.
The crossing, the bridge, the culvert's still good.
They're in fair shape. It's approximately about thirty-eight foot, double span, wood structure.
Well, I don't know, my opinion is if there's someone that objects, I suppose we can wait a while and see. If the structure fails, I think it'll have to be closed. I don't think we can afford to put, spend a lot of money on a low-maintenance road for a bridge or culvert.
Half mile shortcut.
Now, earlier this year, you refused to rescind a motion on a closed road where we had an objection at the hearing. And we're not even in the middle of a hearing with verbal affirmation of a rejection.
He voted no on that closure, too.
Interestingly enough, without explaining anything, and then I asked for a rescinding, which he should have been in favor of if he voted no in the first place, and he refused. I find that quite interesting. It seems to be just all about who you know, or who you are, or what property you have.
Because it's been closed, it's been closed. If we go back and rescind every one that we've closed in the last twenty years.
He just said if there's an objection, we had a verbal objection at the actual hearing where I was led to believe that there was a failure, and here I find it's just a low-water crossing that it ended up, you know, having a farmer have to go around a whole section to get to his property on the other side, and we will have not fixed the bridge, that, that was the whole, you know, premise of the road closure. Well, the, the, the bridge needs fixed. And if and when it does get fixed, then everybody has access through that bridge. The, the bridge is closed, and now an additional side passage road is closed.
The bridge wasn't on that road.
It's on the, it's on the latitudinal line, the north, the west-east line. Below, we closed a north-south road and the bridge was one section to the left, to the, I'm sorry, to the west. And that was part of the discussion at the, at the hearing.
I'm not sure having to go a half mile down highway is a real. I think there are a lot of people go a lot more than a half mile down the highway to get to a field.
It's got a white road there, too. Big white shoulders up on it, too. Not like fourteen highway.
What else you got, Michael?
Uh, probably be at least two weeks before I get some additional information on, uh, bridge services from that other company. That's all I have for this week.
Bob, what you got?
Well, we've been working on lowering those signs on that project. Getting quite a few of those done. And we got cement board on our tow wall on our little box bridge up there on Ry. So, got that taken care of. Then some spot gravel around the northwest corner up there. Started working on cutting down, trimming a few trees around last week, a little bit, so. And this, they're normal, blading and going maintenance stuff, but that all we've been doing right now.
Anything, have they have anything for Michael and Bob?
Where are we at on the usage of the mapping program so that we can know what projects are active or completed or on the queue?
Three-one-one? Getting figured out how to pull all those reports and have something, I guess, is my main thing, have it distributed and?
They don't give, they don't provide tech service for that?
They do, and as I advised, tomorrow I will be having a meeting with them.
Tomorrow's the meeting?
Yes.
Thing else for the cases today?
Did you decide how you're going?
Equipment is running pretty well? Equipment's running pretty well?
Well, we're working on that old roller truck, too. And we found it, staring at it for a while.
Did you? Okay.
So we, we went and looked it over and thought, think it'll work, so we got it up here then. So they're starting in. See, I may have to change the plumbing on it a little bit, but other than that, I think everything should fit right in. Just a few minor things that go every day, all that stuff.
Did you decide how you're going to measure the gravel pits to get the information to the appraiser's office?
I have not came up with a solid idea on that yet.
So you don't have a, you didn't look at one of them to determine?
I did, I measured area and then.
Okay. I guess the price. Have you, you, the information you gave us is, is what you had, right, from the surrounding counties?
And so do we still have a third, the last number I heard was about a third of the stockpile of the one-inch roadstone that we purchased from APAC this year? We still have that on stock? And do we have any assessment, any concept of if we mix that in with what we're going to be excavating or hauling from our own gravel pits, how far is that going to go? Since we're coming to the end of the year, that's going to roll over into our two thousand eighteen budget.
That's hard to say.
We have no idea?
Depending on the conditions of the gravel pit on, the weather conditions, it all relates back to that.
But you don't have any plans for where it's going? As of now, there's no plan?
Like I say, that's just a backup for when we have problems, wet conditions, bad spot in the road, poor quality gravel or something.
So you're, you're saving it only for bad conditions or, or spots that need that particular, so going back to the example we talked about earlier on Kiowa by the Sylvan High School. What, what was put there earlier in the year? Because we were told by Mr. Meitler that we hadn't hauled anything out of his pit, which is Wolf Creek, which would be the closest place. So what was placed there? Was that the, the one-inch roadstone from APAC?
It was out of Wolf Creek.
It came out of Wolf Creek? But you guys sat here and told me that we couldn't get in there because the crossing had been washed out with all those rains, so something got there earlier this year?
The time it rains up there, it washes that out. A good big rain, it washes it out. We wait for it to get down and put it back in. We had it washed out, I don't know, three or four times last year. So we couldn't get back in it.
So you're saying?
That rain affects it and it washes out again.
What was placed there just recently came from Wolf Creek?
Yeah.
But what about in the beginning of this year, before you ever got into Wolf Creek for the year, the pit? Where did that come from? Where did that come from?
The only thing that was placed on that road was out of Wolf Creek. It wasn't this year.
Last year? Was that the one-inch roadstone?
That was just, no, that was out of Wolf Creek, I said.
Okay. Okay. Do you have a total number of mileage for gravel? And/or approximately at what thickness maybe for the past two years that we've hauled? I have the dollar amounts, and I can assess the cubic yardage based on that for our own pits. And we looked at, I think we had purchased APAC material for eight dollars a ton this year, so I can see the numbers. Do you know how many miles we've covered?
Not without going back to looking at everything, because most of it were just maybe a couple hundred feet or three hundred yards or so. Just most of it here this year has been spotting in after flood damage all over. So, really haven't had it down a whole mile or anything, other than a couple that I can think of. So, most of it has been a few loads here, a few loads there, so it's hard to bet a total mileage without going out there and measuring every spot exactly.
Have we used the, um, the roller and, in multiple locations this year, the tow behind?
Yeah, I've been using it. That truck's broke down right now. The tractor pulls it.
The tractor.
And then roll on the set, and then it broke down, the steering broke down on it. I've been trying to find parts or amounts or better.
So, do you send one particular driver with that, or is the, is the blade operator for that route supposed to?
Blade operators usually.
Is supposed to coordinate that themselves?
They work that one blades and one roll. Once in a while we'll have somebody at three that can run it.
Okay, want to talk about, anymore, talk about the gravel pits? What we're going to do about cost of gravel? I guess until we get some measurements on gravel areas that we have.
So, very taxation?
Yeah, I, I, there's very little we can do about that, so we know. So, we don't know what kind of numbers we're looking at, I guess. I would assume it's what they can't plant would be what we want to consider as, as our commercial part of it. If they can plant it, you know, it would be agricultural land as far as I'm concerned, but...
And that would be the condition of it on January one?
Yeah, and that's, uh, that's, I guess that's just another job that we need to do at the end of the year, the start of the year, is to figure that out, how big. So, we kind of have an idea if we want to adjust any, do any adjustments to rates.
Wouldn't it be simpler if you guys just paid the taxes on it like you had the current lease?
If we want.
But we also need to know, we need to know how much area it is. And so does she know. She needs to know too.
When he goes, "I want to be there presently," does he measure it, just to see how he measures it?
I'm sure he can contact you when he looks at him.
Did you hear, do you want me to repeat that, Terry?
Yes, if you would.
Wouldn't that be simpler if you would not, if the tax landowner? Why don't the county just pay for that commercial? Why are they using?
I think, I think, I think probably what will happen is that the leases are going to get redone to compensate for us as far as currently it's a hundred dollars a year for gravel, whatever. And I would, I would assume that we're going to adjust the hundred dollars a year up to compensate for the taxes.
So, are you going to, out of the five of the twelve that you taxed this year, those five, are you going to just say, "We're not going to tax you because we screwed up"?
We didn't.
I have items on my desk.
Yeah.
But I thought there was just two. I think there was just two. Not by mine records, but... But missed, you're saying two out of the twelve were missed? I got more than that. You may have to fill me in. But see, that's not my job. I believe that's the road supervisor or the public works to go around to be accurate January first, where these pits are, if they're county leased, right?
Well, no, regardless, well, if they're county leased for their department, yes, but if the appraisers' job, whether they're, whether they're leased or not, that's still the appraisers' job.
And regardless, you missed two. That's still two. That is not fair for all the others. That's like discriminating. Are you discriminating or what, you know?
I don't think it was done on purpose.
Well, then, I think we should start over and begin the new year. I mean, if you're going to be it that way, I mean, why should you tax those certain amount but leave out two?
I've got items, so they're going to be taxed.
So, the old, what your map are going off of, it isn't even accurate? I guess, I just have problems with that.
Okay, anything else?
Well, what, what is going to be the guidance of the commission on that issue? I believe that is something where we have a say-so legitimate legislative duty, if you will, to guide that process. We hire the appraiser, we hire the highway department personnel. Both of those entities are responsible for this activity, and it's a taxation issue. It's a money issue. It should very much be our responsibility to ensure that that's done uniformly and with an approach that we deem appropriate. I'm not sure that we can just leave that hanging week after week for open discussion. Are we going to give some guidance on that?
Did you say you had them on your desk?
I have two items, so they will all be taxed.
So, they'll be taxed this year?
Mm-hmm.
They'll be back taxed?
Mm-hmm. They'll be added as...
Do they know that? Do those two other landowners know that they're going to be, this is going to be added to them?
Well, no, there are two who'll find out when they get their tax payment.
Are they, I mean, somebody should call them and say, "Hey, this is what's going to happen." I mean, just for politeness, I mean, for courtesy. Talking to Ellsworth County, I just, there's such a big difference in courtesy, I guess you could say. When I talk to their appraiser, he is like, "I would have called you and let you know, hey, you're going to get a tax, your taxes are increased. Let's meet up. Let's go to your gravel pit. Let's look at it, see what we got." Not, "Here's a paper in the mail, make sure you know."
That's also the appraiser who refused to follow his form for seven or eight years and then taxed them at four times the rate they're getting taxed in Lincoln.
This is Ellsworth County?
Yes.
You're talking about his demeanor, not his ability to follow state statute.
Okay, so this, this statute, whenever it was passed in nineteen eighty-nine?
I, I don't know that.
Yes, that's true.
That's what they're on the seat, basically?
So, we have that many years that have gone by, I mean...
Apparently. I wasn't aware of the statute. I don't know all the statutes.
Ultimately, it saved everyone money because the county hasn't had to, hasn't had to go back and...
Exactly, I'm all for it.
Right, so now that we are looking at the issue, we need to have...
Start over on the new year. That way, we have accurate maps, we know where all the gravel pits are. We're not trying to wonder, "Well, back in the day, where, where was this at? Where was we taking gravel out of? How big was the gravel pit?" I, you know, a little accuracy would be appreciated. I'm not complaining that I had to pay five hundred eighty-eight thousand. That's not the point. You brought it up the last meeting. You made a hundred thousand dollars. Well, yeah, I did. But, that's not the point. I want fairness, and this is not fair. You better be fair over everybody. I mean, be accurate, be fair. That's all I want.
I think she said, if she has two on her desk that we missed that are going to get taxed.
But the, but the dialogue was that that may not even be all of them. So, I move for Public Works Director to furnish the commission with an updated and detailed map of Lincoln County contracted gravel pits.
Didn't you give her one, Bob?
Didn't have what you have. See if we can measure off what we've had here. Like I said, it's kind of hard when you're hollow gravel and you keep changing the dimensions. But we can get something close here in the first of the year. Maybe be able to kind of come up with something. I can guarantee it'll be accurate, but it looks like down to square footage or anything, but...
Well, they're saying that the government maps aren't accurate.
Well, we're going to have to work the appraisers' office. We're not a taxing agency. You know, they're going to have to approve what we may measure, whatever that may be, you know? I can say, "This is where we're working. This is how much ground we are currently disturbing."
I think you have the chain of command a bit confused because you are employed by the commission and the appraiser, and the appraiser is employed by the commission. The details of the maps that you create will be approved by the commission, and the appraiser will be in on the process to comparatively assess what's already been taxed versus what will be taxed in the future. That's why the map needs to come to the commission. We are charged with responsibility. We are the supervisory personnel, which is in your job description and in her job description as well. And if we're not going to take it upon ourselves to be responsible with this issue, then you, as the people, need to stand up and claim your rights as the, the boss in the situation, for lack of a better word, because that's how this is supposed to work.
Well, I think the appraisers' office and the highway department are going to have to come up with a process together.
The motion died for a lack of second.
Chairman will make that decision. Go on, Terry.
I think that they're going to have to work together to come up with the appropriate way to measure them and tax them.
I think it would be more appropriate for the department who, who is out on the roads on the regular basis to go ahead and take those measurements. I'm not sure why a measuring wheel, which was suggested last week, is any kind of expensive or cumbersome endeavor. I don't believe it would be.
It's the time involved in doing it and when they can get out there to do it. And they're still going to have to work with the appraisers' office to get it accurate.
Okay, Terry, in past conversations, we have discussed how...
I don't, what I don't understand, everybody says these government mappings not accurate. Don't they pay crop, I mean, isn't crop insurance and all that calculated off government maps? Aerial photos?
Yeah, but it's not down to the T.
So, why aren't you standing over there every week complaining to them because they're not accurate?
You're going to have to go to Washington DC to fight that.
They're obviously fairly accurate.
Oh, yeah.
How can you tell when there's trees growing up in the gravel? I mean, have you ever looked at a map? Have you looked at the gravel map? An aerial map and compare it to the gravel itself?
I've never looked at the aerial map of your gravel pit.
There we go. And that's it.
Okay, we had a motion on the floor. It died for a lack of second. I, I guess I would encourage you to continue your endeavors and work with the county appraiser to rectify this situation. I think we, we've got to have some type of coordination between the departments. We can sit here and, and talk about it, but until we see it and know what's going on, we're pretty well in the dark.
I have one last question on the gravel pit issue. We're five minutes over, but why is it that the other commissioners here at the table don't want to see that map? Don't want to have it furnished at a public meeting from our highway department? Why is it that you don't want that map here?
I don't need that map. I know where they're at. Didn't you give her, mark something on a map and give it to her?
Yeah, marked the locations of all our pits.
Thank you, guys. Have a good week. David?
Then how'd we miss two?
Well, I got documentation that you missed five here. Because I visited them.
I didn't miss anything. Maybe the appraisers' office did, but I didn't.
She, the appraiser told us last week that the map that was furnished to her came from the highway department, just like I was personally furnished a map from the highway department. But none of these maps have been presented in public by the request of the commission for everyone to see.
All right.
Ironically enough.
I presented the chairman with a training request for, for a course down in Topeka to be offered by the state. This is the first time it's been done within the state. The, the form that I presented him with states that, that I have the commission's authorization to attend this training. Normally, this training's done at Evansburg, Maryland with the Emergency Management Institute, and this is the first time that it's been offered in the state. And it's not a mandatory class that I have to have, but Foundations of Emergency Management, National Emergency Management Basic Academy is the title of the course. And again, I presented the commissioner with a copy for him to sign that just authorizes me to attend that class. The document that I handed all of you was from the incident management team. They did a presentation at the KEC conference, and that's a synopsis of what was presented at the, at the conference to commissioners and other department heads that were there in attendance. Again, we had a working group meeting that I recently attended, and the, one of the presenters, Alan Radcliffe from Jefferson County, was gracious enough to make a copy of that and just wanted all department heads, commissioners, city council people to be aware that if an incident happens within your jurisdictional boundaries, this is what will happen, this is how it will happen, and this is why it will happen. So, I just wanted everybody to be on the same page when, when an incident management team is requested through the state to come in and assist with an incident. Again, nothing exciting, just information for your file.
Does this class give you some sort of credits that you need for maintaining?
It's eighty hours, eighty hours worth of training.
That'll count towards, towards my, yes, correct. Continuing education?
Education, yes, ma'am.
For next year, or how does that work? Does it...
To continue your, to continue your certification, you need twenty-four hours biannually. So, twelve hours a year is what you need through the state to, to continue your certification. The eighty hours is just, that's...
Additionally?
Correct.
So, you have it completed for 2017, and you have to do twelve hours in 2018?
Correct.
Or you've already completed all of your twenty-four for this year and next year?
For seventeen and sixteen.
Seventeen and sixteen were together, so it's eighteen and nineteen.
My next recertification date through the state is January eighth. So, up to that January eighth date, I have to have twenty-four hours that I have to have accumulated. And I've accumulated those hours in training.
So, is this one after January eighth?
That is correct, yes.
Oh, so it'll count for 2018?
Correct, yes, ma'am. So, I'm just asking for you, to ask the chairperson for your signature that the chair, excuse me, the commission would allow me to go to this training.
It's covered in your budget, or is it...
It's, it's, the hotel's state-funded. It, it comes out of Homeland Security money. All I'd be responsible for was gas going down and meals while I'm there. And again, it's, it's four days, four different, four different times, two days each time. Each of those...
Do you have that, do you have that calculated from your own funds that your travel, your travel reimbursement comes out of your funds?
Yes.
And that's, you're good to go till the end of the year, in other words?
Yes, yes, and again, that starts in eighteen, so that's, that's a whole different calendar year, yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying. We won't be paying it until...
Right, until after.
Till the turn of the budget.
Correct, correct.
So, what, is there, are there funds left over in your budget to transfer?
I'm, I'm, I'm real tight, real tight. And I may be over, I think I'm waiting for money to come back into my calendar from the zombie event that we hosted. I have a bicycle that hasn't been paid for yet. And then also, the communities and the school districts are still resupplementing my income for the use of the civic-ready program.
And you'll get your state reimbursements in time?
Correct, correct. In, in the past two years, it's been the thirty-first, I think.
So, you're choosing this January twenty-fourth and fifth in Wichita?
Yeah, no. No, no. The top session, eh? The top ones. And again, it's two different times. Yes.
Oh, I thought you said Wichita, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And again, it's two times this time. It's eighty hours. It's ten hours, it's twenty hours, twenty hours, twenty hours, twenty hours.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, will that... So will that all count for 2018 and nineteen?
Just eighteen. But again, I can carry over. As long as I can show that I've had twenty-four hours biannually, I'm covered, so, yes.
I don't have a problem with it.
Probably ought to have a motion for me to sign this.
What is it called?
L-101, Foundations of Emergency Management Basic Academy.
I would move the live day would go to the four days of training, or the four training sessions, two days apiece.
Yeah, I have a second. I will second. We have questions.
Can we amend the motion to say to complete necessary continuing education for 2018?
Yes, we can do that.
Please.
To complete those requirements for education for 2018.
Yeah, yes.
I will approve. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. Okay, David made.
And then one other item of interest. Last Monday, I was notified that Russell County and Osborne County had placed a burn ban in effect. This morning, I communicated with Ellsworth County Emergency Manager, and Ellsworth has also placed a burn ban in effect. I spoke to one of the fire chiefs, referenced the high amount of rainfall that we had this last spring, and the height of the grass and whatnot, and the dry continuation of forecasted weather through ten days. I'm requesting that Lincoln County place themselves in a burn ban.
Ten days from today, is that...
The duration of that dry outlook is ten days from today, yes.
But this proclamation will go into effect until it is repealed?
Correct.
And again, I could visit you folks again next week, or just weekly, if we deem necessary.
Say we're getting a moisture.
Correct.
And if we need to, we can have a special meeting to lift this. We have in the past.
I would move that we approve a resolution, 2017-21, a disaster emergency for a fire ban.
I second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion is carried.
It's getting pretty windy again today, isn't it?
That's all I have.
Okay, David?
Yes, sir.
You better point where you want me to sign, in case I sign in the wrong place. I don't wanna be the payer. Twenty-three, is that where I'm supposed to sign?
Yes, twenty-three A, yes.
Twenty-three A.
Yes, and print your name and title also, please.
Okay.
Oh, can you call over the sheriff's office?
I will notify them, yes.
Don will have to sign that.
Thank you.
Okay. Don, I guess you're up.
I have a couple of, well, three things. Bud, April, I'm not sure how you pronounce his name, The New Museum Guide. The courthouse display cases up on the main floor have been put in there by the museum, as far as I know. That's what I've always been told. But he wanted to change some things up, but he didn't wanna do it without asking your guys' approval to do so. But my understanding is everything in those display cases are owned by the museum and not by Lincoln County, so that's the courtesy. Is it okay?
He wants to exchange out some stuff.
Is the historical society owned by the museum, or is it privately owned?
The county, the historical...
I think it's a non-profit organization.
Separate from the historical society, or the...
No, it is the historical society.
Historical society, what did I say?
No, well, you just said the museum, and I... You said owned by the museum, so it's everything's owned by the historical society?
So that's okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, I told him I'd call. We've been filling questions about Christmas. I didn't wanna make the assumption, but I did make the assumption that since Christmas is on Monday, that there won't be any extra days given off, but I wanna make sure that that is correct. And then last year, for Christmas, you guys did Chamber Bucks for every county employee in the amount of twenty-five dollars. We've done that the past two years. The previous years, we've done turkey and ham. Turkey for a ham, turkey in a couple of years, hams in a couple of years. So I don't know. What is your desire this year?
From where? The meat?
When we bought the turkey and the hams, we bought them from Lincoln Grocery. And then the past couple of years, we've done Chamber Bucks, where they have to spend the money within the community at local businesses, so...
I think the Chamber Bucks are the better option.
Where does that come from? What budget?
Employee benefits.
Benefits?
I don't think twenty-five dollars is too much to give to employees. It's a lot simpler than hams and turkeys and...
It's fine with me to... Alexis, do you have any questions, comments?
No.
Preferences?
I would move to give the employees twenty-five dollars in Chamber Bucks for Christmas menus.
I second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
Okay. I guess I'm tasked with this... This problem. Technically, two meetings ago on eleven-twenty-seven, you guys violated open meetings twice. When you came out of the... When you came out of the executive session and you failed to have discussion or an actual vote on something, you made the decision... That implied that you made the decision within the executive session and not outside of the meeting. So that's part of the reason why I came up with this form. And I came about this information because I was trying to figure out whether or not the mediation is going to be a closed meeting or an open meeting. And I was visiting with the Attorney General's Office attorney that had called me. And then so I kinda just threw it out there because I wasn't really a hundred percent sure. And she had cited a couple of violations that have been ruled on. And when I was reading one of those violations, the other thing that I realized is that that statute says that you must also announce where you will reconvene the meeting at, and in this room is not appropriate. And apparently, like, the school district, the one that I read, had said in this room, and they had cited that as being inappropriate as well. So it's kind of like, all of us together, we're gonna get educated together. So you saw the form, but here's a copy of the form. And what I tried to do is basically take the ones that apply to you, otherwise this would be two pages long. But if you want them all, we can include them all. If there's a number missing, it's one that doesn't really necessarily apply to us, like gaming. There were some that were on legislative matters itself, things like that. If you look at them and you decide you want everything included, I mean, we can go to the backside of the page, it's not that big of a deal. But with that, I thought it might be easier if I have a pile of these for you guys to do. So if you know that you want to go into executive session, you can start preparing your statement ahead of time, rather than trying to do it at the last minute. That doesn't necessarily help when department heads are coming in, unless you...
But we can guide them, then, and ask them these questions, and yeah.
Yeah. Unless you want me to disperse them to the department heads that says if you're wanting an executive session, you know, you kinda...
I feel like that's discouraging. I feel like if they had to fill out the paperwork ahead of time, that's discouraging. They just kinda... We have to discuss it openly, anyhow.
I think they just need to have the reason for the...
To know.
Like, maybe a short statement for you guys as to why.
They need to have a statement as to what the reason is.
And then you click the... Or you mark the justification, and then basically what my thought was, was that you could then say, "Aye," and then whoever has circled this and filled out the form, "Move to recess into executive session for the purpose of the statement, read the statement, justification pursuant to the KSA." Because if you guys want me to list motions, I'm sorry, we had a couple of motions today where it's been, "I move to approve David." I feel like I need to put who David is. But I don't wanna get ridiculed for correcting motions and making them correct or read more appropriately. So I thought, then you guys can just read these down, and then you fill in the time in, calculate the time out, and where you're reconvening at, and then we'll put who seconded, and then I'll have this for the minutes. And I know it makes it more cumbersome, but...
I think that's excellent. What... How many more are there? This is thirteen?
I think there's fifteen total. And I'm... I think I deleted out the eleven, fourteen, and fifteen. I probably could've deleted a few more, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
Well, one of them has to do with paramecial bedding, I don't remember.
The former number seven, to discuss relating to KSA seventy-four eighty-eight oh four.
Seven is a paramecial bedding.
It was, yeah, racetrack facilities. There's number eight, care of children, and I've got care of children. And but then I had stayed... I had wrote down on my old... That was state legislature, so I don't think it really applies to us. We'd have to double-check. Number nine is for child's death, which I thought at first, we probably would never have a circumstance of that, but we could potential.
I think, going back to number eight, that's probably more for children in need of care, I think is how they classify them, children in need of care. It's not just necessarily a child in the state.
I have ten that I had wrote down as work comp negotiations, but they changed ten 'cause it's not the same statute. And I didn't... I just did this really quickly on Friday, so I didn't have time to just look up the statute. So I'm assuming that they added a couple. But on this thing that Jennifer had given you, there's fifteen. Like, number fifteen is the Governor's Domestic Violence Fatality Review Board. Fourteen is matters to discuss relating to the Office of Inspector General. But if you want them all, this, the other option would be to do the second side. And I'll probably just... I think what would probably be easier is if I just had five copies, and then if you guys know, if you wanna get from me, unless you want some for your own. It's not like you have a desk drawer to pull them out of. So anyways, as far as the mediation goes, it will be an open meeting, unless you appoint one of yourselves. As far as I know, unless Mr. Mediator, I'm sorry, I forget his name, unless he comes with some statutes, because the Attorney General's Office said as far as the open meetings law goes, there's nothing, but there could be a set of statutes within the mediation agreement. The statute that he quoted in the mediation agreement was more so that they couldn't use the information that is obtained in the mediation conversations in the court case. So I didn't really think that that necessarily applied. So I don't know if the mediator, when you first meet with him, will have a different set of statutes that will govern that, but as far as I know. So your options are, you meet in an open meeting, your words come back to haunt you. If you go into litigation, they can be used. Number two is you appoint one of your board members to represent you to meet with the mediator, or you meet... Have Jennifer meet with the mediator, the county attorney, and then she comes back, you guys go into executive session, you come back out, and she goes back to the mediator, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just something for you guys to think about. I put that you would recess for lunch from twelve to one, that he's gonna be here at one, so I don't know if you want to... I didn't really think about that, if you wanted to come back ahead of time. And I don't even know if you guys wanna discuss anything about the mediation. But I could not find any statutes. I contacted KEC, and they didn't see any, as far as open meetings, that they could quickly pull. And I did talk to Bud, and he couldn't either.
I have a question.
But he did caution you guys from wanting that a mediation violation should not occur in a public meeting.
You called the Attorney General's Office to find out about the mediation, and you used our executive sessions last week as an example, and they basically relayed to you that those were violations. Is that how you came about that knowledge, or is this from our county attorney?
No, our visiting... I visited with Cheryl Whalen. She had called me back about, and then I told her, I said, "I just have some questions about executive sessions." So I started asking questions, because I just felt like there should've been a motion. But I don't really feel like that's my place to tell you guys how to run your meetings.
No, I think that's inappropriate.
But I wanted to confirm what my thoughts was.
Question.
I think we've had multiple violations all year long, because we haven't given statements of reason, the notification of the time and the location where the meeting reconvenes. I think that's been an issue. So I'm grateful that...
Which the inconvenient part is on my end, because I should've... I just didn't pick up that language. I, you know, when she was stressing, I didn't highlight that part as I didn't even read it, so. But so, yes, as the minutes are written right now, we probably have multiple violations since July first, which they find at the Leavenworth School District, when I was reading theirs, just because I felt like it maybe fit a little bit more. Their ruling was because they had met in executive session to terminate an employee. They gave the HR director instruction to terminate the employee. The employee was terminated, but it was never moved into a meeting. So that's kinda how I felt like this had occurred, especially like with the mediation.
We appointed her as contact, but we never motioned. And so basically, if you hadn't included it in the minutes, which you did, which is great, but if you hadn't, then it just doesn't appear at all, because it's not a motion, and you had only have to include the motion.
Yeah, and she told me, you know, 'cause I told her, I said, "Well, what I did was I put that the chairman made the announcement that they had agreed to enter into mediation." And she said, "But where was the discussion amongst the board members?" And she said, "That's when..." And she said, "Even if you had have put the board approved, it would've implied that there was discussion, but since there was no discussion, just an announcement, that's where..." She said that would be...
The decision made before the executive session ended, not afterward, yeah.
Yes. So it's just education.
And saying that the mediation is open unless the attorney board, what about the other side of the mediation? Is that open?
No. And the other sticky point that I have is the contract that... 'Cause I read this to the Attorney General Office, Cheryl, the wording that was in the contract. The contract says that you agree to a secret enclosed meeting, a secret or a mediation, a private, where it will be kept confidential. So Jennifer signed off on that. But we don't know how to make that happen unless you appoint one of your board members to...
Why would we just have the attorney to negotiate?
You can do that. And the reason why you can't go into executive session with the mediator is because that's a third party.
Oh, okay.
And so because he's not your counsel.
She can do the mediating, and then she can go into exec with us.
Get your wants, wishes, desires, come back out if you choose to keep it closed. And I thought I brought a copy of the agreement down, but I don't think I did, but I can go and get it in which... That's why I was hoping that maybe the mediator might have some other statutes.
So would that be consultation with attorney for the public body or agency?
That's what I would say.
Which would be deemed privileged? Which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship. So if this goes into the multiple negotiations, we have to fill out one of these for every time we go in. And we have to say that we're going to come back in, in the downstairs meeting room that we've been in the whole day, so.
Yes. The Love and Horse County one, that the school district put in this room, and they, they ruled that in this room doesn't really adequately distinguish which room, so.
Not sufficient, right.
Well, the school board got in trouble for that too, last spring.
And I did go to an Attorney General's office in, well, I think it was in September or October. I went to an open meetings training in Topeka, but they didn't really touch on that part of it. Because there was too, there was too many people of different, like there was news organizations, county, city, school. They're just, so it was a very generic training session. I did find it interesting. They did not touch on that part of the open meetings session, so I probably would have talked about this.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'll recess this meeting till, well, it's ten to one. You'll pick up. Hopefully the attorney will be there.
Well, maybe I should clarify, part of the reason why I was calling the Attorney General's office was because I wasn't sure if I was supposed to include it on the agenda or not include it. Whether it was open and I needed to make my reforms to the, to the newspapers and the other parties, or, you know, so. Bud?
Did you go out and look how good the credit sheet was?
I didn't, they took us to the...
Unless it's how the other... Notice to proceed to, if you guys would sign that one.
Is there, is there a place where if we get these cut out of the hood, we can have them until he gets his foot there? And keep the rest of them where they should be?
Well, you told me, it just depends on what time I get it tomorrow morning or what time.
I don't know what you guys have and don't have for that road, but this is like everything that I've just kept track of. Concerning Snyder, I think it has the agreement, it'll have the settlement conference agreement. I think that's surprising that Michael had given, I don't know, just my stuff, I may not have everything. But just in case you guys want it, just if you keep it kind of together, so I can read through. And I can make copies, if you want copies. I think it's everything, and you guys already have this. I don't know what you mean, you want me just one track?
I'm sorry if I was out of the room, or did we announce open session?
I think you did, you were, you weren't in here, but you did.
I have a brief point of discussion. Did you get to look at the Attorney General's opinions that I furnished, those two? Mr. Chairman, did you look at the Attorney General's opinion? And do you have an opinion on those?
They both had to do with county commissioners.
Uh huh. As elected officials, contracting with their own personal, right? So it applies to every elected official.
It applies to county commissioners, one of the county commissioner and his wife's on the local newspaper, and one is the county commissioner that wholesale batteries.
So you think that any elected official can contract with their own private company except for a county commissioner?
I don't think they were the same relation as what you, you maintain that they are, in my opinion.
What I'm saying is I gave two Attorney General opinions that both said that as an elected official, you should not...
Said a county commissioner.
Right, but the statute is an elected official.
The contract was between the commission and O'Hare Law Firm, that's the way it was. It specifically sets that in the minutes, that says the commissioners made the decision.
Right, and the state statute says that that had to be let forbid?
I know. The state statute that you referred to said that.
Yes, the state statute that I refer to said that, correct? That's why I'm questioning it. I move to seek Attorney General opinion on KSA seventy-five dash forty-three oh one A and KSA seventy-five dash forty-three oh four to make sure we are not violating a conflict, conflict of interest law by paying a private contract to O'Hare Law LLC without itemized receipts?
Do I have a second? Well, I shall die for a lack of a second. Do we need to meet the mediator before we...
He was going to...
He's right here.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Bershide is present in the house.
I don't get more people here than I had in my whole high school. That's why I come in and say hello. I'll start with the other party.
All right.
And I'll be back down here and talk to you folks, okay?
Okay. We, can we ask, you do these, don't you?
Pardon?
You, you do these with county commissioners previous to this? Okay, what we're being told by the, what the clerk was told by the AG's office is that if we, as a commission, meet with you, we can't do it in an executive session. We have to either appoint someone or have the attorney.
Well, the way I've always handled it, past, I mean, there's no, usually I've had one or two representatives. I have a commission available, maybe just one. The only time you go into executive session is if there's an offer and you agree to accept it. If you reject it, it doesn't make a damn bit of difference to me how you want to do it. So I'm running a little late, but I've been out looking at those, the two roads, to just get the lay of the land, okay? And the other side is actually one bringing the claim, so to speak. So I'll start up there, and I'll come back down here and visit you folks, all right? And the, I didn't break my hat if I should have, so you went out and did his scalp treatment that the doctors got me on.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Did we get, is that in here, the information about the assessment change from before and after the improvements to the property?
I don't believe so.
We talked about that with the attorney.
I don't think it's in there, I think that's just some stuff in the morning that was brought across the table, knowing, I believe.
I'm going to go look at that, ask for that. The attorney said she would bring that for us.
Hey, this is, could you go over my computer and see if there's a cell phone, cell phone signal? And if it is, will you close it all?
I heard that.
So, he started?
Completely different.
He didn't take that chance.
He wasn't named.
Well, first off, it started, I did the best Johnny could. Because I was just, you know, helped her. You know, all these people just shit that you want to do it. I just do a counter.
To get a color, might get.
Yeah, yeah. I had a brief point of discussion that I'd wanted to bring up several times and I think this might be a lull in the- In the meeting here where we could go touch on that. Dawn, you read me a statute a couple months ago about the powers of the commissioners. And I was just wondering, Mr. Chairman, when you met in executive session with the school boards as commissioner, what was that regarding?
It was a- An executive session to discuss finance. I guess is what I would say. I don't know that I'm at liberty to say what was discussed.
And so you were self-appointed as a spokesperson for the commission as an individual to go and represent the commission at?
I wouldn't say I was self-appointed.
So there was a motion and a vote to-
I don't believe there was a motion. I think there was an agreement between the commissioners.
Dawn, do you remember that statute that you read to me verbatim? That was? Okay, I'll look that up. Maybe we could have another little training session on that. That sounds appropriate since-
Was that one that I read?
No, you read it to me. I had requested some information and you said that I would have to go about seeking all information through Cora requests like a citizen and just, you know, get my information with the, you know, giving a three-day notice and that kind of thing. You said that I had no personal liberties as a commissioner, other than when the board is in session. So I was just going back through my notes. I had wondered several times how one individual member of the commission had spoken on the commission's behalf to the school boards regarding finance. I don't know what that finance means. I can only assume that it may have been wind farm money since the new contracts from the wind farm came up and then schools were added into that agreement. I don't know how that was negotiated, but obviously it wasn't done in an open meeting because I wasn't made aware that those contracts were renegotiated in any particular way. So I just thought maybe some clarification was needed since- Especially since we were just notified that we have violated Kansas open meetings as recently as last week. And this would have been last year. So I think it was happening quite frequently. With the board, I went up and retrieved some financial information on the property valuation that we're discussing today with our mediation. Would you like to discuss the changes in valuation in the time period that I've requested?
Share the information, it'd be fine.
So I have for the parcel of land that is being discussed as the access road is from Union North on Fiftieth and then West on Forty-Fifth, correct? Forty-Fifth, I think. The parcel in the year two thousand had no valuation for any structures. It was all evaluated under ag land. And that total was in the year two thousand, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy. No, I'm sorry, that was the previous year. And then the current year for two thousand was thirty-nine thousand, thirty. So that was nineteen ninety-nine and then two thousand. And then if you go to the year two thousand and I'm not sure when the mobile structure was taxed. I'm not sure the first year that it was taxed, but the last year that it was taxed, it was taxed at a value of eight thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars as personal property because it's not permanently affixed to the ground. And so that was in the year two thousand and eleven, turning into two thousand and twelve. In the year two thousand and twelve is when the next structure was built that took the place of the mobile structure. So this is a permanent structure. And it was then taxed at- Okay, so the new structure in two thousand and twelve was then increased to a tax of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ten. After it was taxed then in the year two thousand and thirteen from the year two thousand and twelve when it was installed and was built, constructed to thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ten. So we went from zero in the year two thousand because this excludes the ag land on that parcel. This is just the structures. It went from zero on a structure to a mobile structure at eight thousand odd and then to this permanent structure at thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ten. And that does not include next year's value, which will also increase by the amount of the home. This is just for the structure that is being used. Correct. So there's also now this year, hasn't been taxed yet, so we don't have a valuation on that. So on top of the thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ten, there will be a value assessed for the home that was added in addition to that structure.
Is that building taxed as commercial?
Commercial and ag are the same rate. So it's taxed at the same rate. Commercial buildings and agricultural buildings are both at twenty-five percent. So it's not being taxed as residential. It is being taxed as farm or- It has it under farm. I don't- Is there a difference between farm and ag? Is that? I know it's the same percent.
Are you saying it's F R?
There's one A for ag and F for farm, but they're both twenty-five percent.
No, that's residential. That's a farm residence. Let me- What year did you? You said we were looking at two thousand and thirteen.
She had the mobile home valued at eight thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars in personal property, starting in the year two thousand and twelve. And then the structure- Two structures because there's what they're calling an implement building, which I guess that's a Morton building and something like that. And then the lean-to, I don't know if that's attached, but they're two, there's-
It's a lean-to, it's attached.
Well, they're taxed separately.
One's taxed as residential, I assume. I assume part of the building has been considered a residence and part of it has been considered a machine shop or something.
See, and I think he come up and told her last year that he was no longer doing the hunting lodge thing. And so it may have changed the classification yet again on that building.